Good evening. It's 6:30. Calling the meeting to order. My name is Justin Lardinois and I am the Chair of the Planning Commission. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting. Please remember to turn off your cell phones, myself included. The parking validation machine for the garage under city hall is located at the rear of the chambers. Following roll call during summary of hearing procedure, we will review how the public may provide comment during today's session. Also, this is my first meeting as Chair and our first meeting using new computers here in the chamber, so apologies for any technical difficulties. We'll now salute the flag.
... two flag of United States of America to the Republic, which stands one nation should govern, invisible liberty and justice.
Now we'll do the roll call. Myself, Justin Lardinois, the Chair, I'm here. Vice Chair Ornellis Wise?
Here.
Oh, and just so everyone knows, there is a button to the right on the tablet of a person with sound waves coming out of their mouth. That's the one you need to tap to speak. Commissioner Barocio? It's over on the right, but we heard you. Commissioner Bigford? Commissioner Cantrell?
Here.
Commissioner Casey?
Here.
Commissioner Garcia?
Here.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Here.
Commissioner Rosario?
Here.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Here.
And Commissioner Young?
Here.
All right, for the summary of hearing procedures, if you want to address the Commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards on the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. Procedure for this hearing is, or also if you're on Zoom, you can raise your hand. The procedure for this hearing is as follows: After staff's presentation, applicants and/or repellents may make up to a five-minute presentation. During the public comment period, the Chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received for those members of the public who attend in person. As your name is called, line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. For members of the public who attend by teleconference, the meeting technician will connect those persons who desire to speak to the Commission so they may be heard. Generally, each speaker will be given up to two minutes for public testimony, and speakers using a translator will have up to four minutes. At the discretion of the Chair, the time allotted to each speaker may be changed depending on the number of items on the agenda, number of speakers, and other factors. Speakers using a translator will have double the time allotted. After the public testimony, the applicant and/or repellent may make closing remarks for up to an additional five minutes. Planning Commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to Commission questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed, and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's actions on rezonings, pre-zonings, and general plan amendments and code amendments is only advisory to the City Council. The City Council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides procedures for legal protests to City Council on rezonings and pre-zonings. The Planning Commission's actions on conditional use permits is appealable to the City Council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of municipal code. Agendas and all staff reports for this meeting may be accessed at the Planning Commission's website. Assume I don't have to read off the URL? No, okay. All right, so call to order and orders of the day. Before we begin, I want to remind the Planning Commission and members of the public to follow our Code of Conduct at meetings. This includes commenting on the specific agenda item only and addressing the full body. Public speakers will not engage in a conversation with Commissioners or staff. All members of the Planning Commission, staff, and the public are expected to refrain from abusive language. Repeated failure to comply with the Code of Conduct, which will disturb, disrupt, or impede the orderly conduct of this meeting, may result in removal from the meeting. This meeting of the Planning Commission will now come to order. All right, public comment. So this is the time for public comments to Planning Commission on non-agendized items. For members of the public who attend in person, please fill out a speaker's card and give it to technician. For members of the public who join by teleconference, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press *9 on your phone to raise a hand to speak. Each member of the public may address the Commission for up to two minutes. The Commission cannot take any formal action without the item being properly noticed and placed on an agenda. In response to the public comment, the Planning Commission is limited to the following options: Responding to statements made or questions posed by members of the public, or requesting staff to report on a matter at a subsequent meeting, or directing staff to place the item on a future agenda. And do we have any speakers for public comment for items not on the agenda? Here, yes. All right. Yeah, there's a microphone right there. Just come over and state your name, and you have two minutes. Two minutes.
Good evening, members of the San Jose Planning Commission. My name is Rigo Galardo. I'm a carpenter from Carpenter's Local 405 in San Jose. As a union carpenter and a proud resident of this beautiful community, I stand before you today to advocate for crucial area labor standards that will not only benefit workers but also enhance the overall well-being of our city. I'm here to champion the importance of a livable wage, accessible health care, a commitment to accredited apprenticeship programs, and the significance of local hire. First and foremost, let's talk about livable wage. We are the backbone of the construction industry, working tirelessly to build and improve our community. However, it is disheartening to see many of us struggle to make ends meet due to inadequate wages. A livable wage is not only, is not just about survival, it's about thriving and being able to support our families with dignity and pride. By ensuring a livable wage for carpenters and other workers, we can strengthen the very foundation of our community. Access to affordable and comprehensive health care is not a luxury, it's a basic human right. As we work hard day in and day out, we should not have to worry about the financial burden of medical care for ourselves and our families. Providing accessible health care is not only morally right but also beneficial for a healthier and more productive workforce. Apprenticeship programs are the lifeblood of skilled trades like carpentry. These programs offer hands-on training, mentorship, and a pathway to fulfilling career. By committing to accredited apprenticeship programs, we can ensure that the next generation of carpenters or tradespeople are well-prepared to meet the demands of our every evolving industry. Additionally, local hire is of paramount importance. Many of us call San Jose our home, and it should be a place where we can both live and work. Commuting long distances for work not only takes a toll on our well-being but also contributes to traffic congestion and environmental impacts. By prioritizing local hire, we foster a stronger sense of community and promote sustainability. I implore the San Jose Planning Commission to champion these area labor standards and take a proactive approach to support like myself and by ensuring a livable wage, access to health care, accredited apprenticeship programs, and local hire. You not only uplift the workforce but also contribute to the prosperity and harmony of our beloved town or city. Let us work together to create an environment where all workers can thrive, where our hard work is valued, and where we can continue to build a better future for San Jose. Your decision on these labor standards will have a lasting impact, and I sincerely hope you choose to stand with us in creating a more just and equitable community. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. And a question for staff, I realized after public comment began, I don't have a way of viewing a timer. Is one being kept?
Yeah, the mic automatically cuts off at two minutes.
Oh, I see. Okay. Thank you. All right. Is there any additional public comment? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to deferrals and removals from the calendar. Any items scheduled for hearing this evening which deferrals being requested will be taken out of order to be heard first on the matter of deferral or removal. Staff will provide an update on the items for which deferral or removal is being requested. If you want to change any of the deferral dates recommended or speak to the question of deferring or removing these or any other items, you should say so at this time. For members of the public who join by teleconference, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom or press *9 on your phone to raise a hand to speak. Staff, do we have any items to defer today?
None from staff.
Thank you, Robert. All right, we'll move on.
So the unconsent calendar would be the minutes?
Correct.
Correct. We need to defer that. I think there's a, an error that we need to clarify.
Okay. Yeah, we'll discuss that during the consent calendar.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. All right, so we're moving on to the consent calendar as alluded to, and let's see. There's currently the minutes from a previous meeting on July 12th on the consent calendar, and it sounds like there are corrections that need to be made?
Yeah, actually, I think it was a miscount or misinterpretation of vote for Vice Chair. It seems there's recorded 11 votes, but there were only 10 of us there.
Right, yeah. So in my recollection, I believe we were just raising hands and we didn't establish that there was a limit on whether someone could vote for multiple.
So you can have more than?
Yeah, I don't think we had been particularly explicit on what the process was going to be, and that's, that's my understanding of what happened. I'm not clear. Not 100% on that. Daniel, do you have any?
I don't want to contest the results. Let's be clear. I just wanted to clarify that that seemed like a strange anomaly.
Someone voted twice.
I do remember someone voted for themselves.
Okay. Okay, we can, I'm happy to let the results stand because I think a fine candidate won that vote, but it just seemed odd.
So, no, okay. Just making sure.
It just seemed odd. I couldn't figure it out.
Any other discussion on the consent calendar? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move we adopt?
Second, motion from Commissioner Young and a second from Commissioner Tordeos. Let me just navigate back to my vote screen here. Give me a moment. Oh, right, that button. Great, okay. And... Oh, maybe it's just a list. Okay, I'll just read through what I've got here. Vice Chair Ornellis, sorry, just to be clear, this is the motion to approve the consent calendar. Vice Chair Ornellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
And Commissioner Bigford is absent? Is that correct? Yeah. Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes, with the exception, of course, that I talked about, but yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
No.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right, now we will move on to the public hearing. Now, items A through G are annual compliance review hearings, and my understanding is that there will be a single presentation on all of them? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and I've been advised by city attorney that on one of these items, sorry, give me just a second. Just reading through to make sure I've got, I believe it's item 5D? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, on item 5D, several Commissioners have a conflict, so my advice from city attorneys that will take the presentation, and then afterwards will vote on each item individually, and at that time, those Commissioners can state their recusal. All right, so let's go ahead with the presentation.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Commission. This is the annual compliance review hearing for the seven active development agreements in the city. These include Cisco in North San Jose, Shaya Properties in Japantown, Apple in North San Jose, eBay, PayPal in North San Jose, Hitachi Western Digital in South San Jose, and EQT Exeter, Vista Montana Park Equity Tasman Apartments, also in North San Jose, and finally, Google in the downtown west area. As background, state law authorizes development agreements between local agencies and developers or owners. Development agreements in the city are regulated through Title 18 of the municipal code. These seven development agreements have been adopted by the City Council. State law and the municipal code require that the city conduct annual compliance reviews to ensure that these developers are in compliance with the terms and conditions of their DAs, which is why this item is before you tonight. This item does not involve the consideration of any new or modified development agreement terms or conditions, nor is this item associated with any new or modified land use entitlements. Each of these seven DAs are associated with different land use entitlements and have unique terms and conditions. Staff has completed an assessment of these DA terms and has concluded the developers aren't in compliance for the period between July 1st, 2023, and June 30th, 2024, as outlined in greater detail in the staff report. Therefore, if the Planning Commission finds that the developers associated with their respective DAs are in compliance with the terms and conditions, and staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt the resolutions certifying compliance as such. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Patrick. As mentioned earlier, that presentation pertained to items 5A through 5G, but we're going to have discussion of those items individually. So the first is DA 10-001, which is the annual compliance review hearing for the Cisco Systems Development Agreement. Do we have any public comment on that item? Looks like no? Okay, so we'll go to the Commission for discussion or motion, and give me a moment to get to this mic screen. I see a request from Commissioner Young. I believe this will automatically turn on your microphone.
Thank you, Chair. I just have one small clarification, I think. So on page five of the staff report, talks about additional parking can be used as intensification of use, and I just wonder if you could explain that to me? It kind of doesn't make sense, but if you could explain it, that'd be great.
Yes, for that project, the campus, the industrial R&amp;D campus was developed with basically R&amp;D buildings that are designed to not occupy as many people as a normal tech office would. It's more spread out inside, and so the intent of having additional parking qualify as intensification was basically to provide for more people to work in those buildings. So the requirement was either construct more square footage, more office space, or make more intensive utilization of the existing office space. So they did that by providing 105% of the parking requirement.
Okay, so, just so I understand, by providing additional parking, that would allow more folks to work in the building, which intensifies the use? Is that correct?
Yes, that was the idea.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have no one else on my speaker list. Would anyone like to propose a motion?
Motion to approve the staff recommendation?
We have a motion from Commissioner Tordeos to approve the staff recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cantrell. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Vice Chair Ornellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Commissioner Bigford is absent. All right, so that passes. With a, do I need to read off the vote? I think the technician told me that it's not showing on Zoom what the vote is, so in that case. So that would be 10, 10 yes, 0 no, and 1 absence. Yeah, thank you, Robert. All right, so we're moving on to item 5B, which is DA 14-003. It's the annual compliance review hearing for the development agreement for the property bounded by North Sixth Street, East Taylor Street, North Seventh Street, and Jackson Street. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the Commission for any discussion or motions. Oh, Commissioner Tordeos, let me, go ahead.
Thank you. Just one quick question for staff. I saw on the staff report that the agreement is set to end in 2024, but construction of the Center for the Creative Arts isn't required to start until 2027. Is there any mechanism to actually enforce the construction start for the Center for the Creative Arts?
I'd like to introduce Nancy Klein, Economic Development Director. She may be able to respond to that question.
Good evening, Chair and members of the Commission. Nancy Klein, Director of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. There isn't a mechanism specifically to force a start, but the ability to have the benefits of the DA subside or go away in 2027, which are important benefits. So talking to the developer recently, they fully intend to move forward, and we'll see what market conditions are. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was it for me.
Okay. I don't have any other hands up for this item, so is there a motion?
Motion to approve?
To approve the staff recommendation?
Yes.
Great. Motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Casey. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Vice Chair Ornellis Wise. Any discussion? We'll move on to the vote. Vice Chair Ornellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Commissioner Bigford is absent, so I believe that passes with 10 yes, 0 no, and 1 absence. Great, we'll move on to the next item. This is 5C, DA 15-002, the annual compliance review hearing for the Apple Inc. Development Agreement. Do we have any public comment for this item? Seeing none, we'll go to the Commission, oh, sorry. For the presentation up there? Yeah, we got John over here from...
You're welcome to have my paper copied.
Thank you, Commissioner Oliverio. Like I mentioned, this is a new system, so we're still learning. All right, so I believe there was no public comment on this item, so we'll go to the Commission for any discussion. Or a motion.
A motion to approve staff recommendation.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Cantrell and a second from Commissioner Tordeos. So we'll go to the vote. Or, well, is there any discussion on the motion first? Oh, yeah, Vice Chair Ornellis Wise? Yeah, feel free.
I just wanted to get an update on the three wells. Do they propose to drill those three wells?
At this time, no. The Water Department has not indicated a need for the wells at this point, but just the ability to drill them if needed.
So if it expires, when does this development agreement expire?
Let's see, it expires October 24th, 2014.
Okay.
So if it does expire, then the ability to drill those wells would have to be negotiated individually between the city and Apple.
Okay, thanks.
Is there any other discussion on the motion to approve the staff recommendation? Seeing none, we'll go to the vote. Vice Chair Ornellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes, and Commissioner Bigford is absent, so that is 10 yes, 0 no, and 1 absence. All right, we're moving on to item 5D. This is DA 21-001, the annual compliance review hearing for the Downtown West Development Agreement, and it is my understanding that several Commissioners need to recuse themselves on this item. So I believe the procedure is that they would state the reason for their recusal and then exit the meeting for the remainder of this item and then return afterwards. Is that correct?
If there's discussion?
Oh.
Yeah, if there's discussion on this item, I don't want to make folks leave unless there's going to be a discussion.
Oh, I see. They only need to leave if there's a discussion, but they still need to state their recusal?
Yes.
Okay. So I don't know who all it is, so just, okay, Commissioner Tordeos?
Oh, yeah, so I'm recusing just because I'm employed by Google and I also have some Google stock.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have Google stock, but I don't know what the threshold is, so I'll play it safe and recuse as well.
I believe it's, is it $2,000?
$2,000 or more, and direct or indirect investment in $2,000 or more. $2,000 or more. And direct or indirect investment in $2,000 or more, or income of $500 or more, so.
Oh, good. Okay, so Commissioner Barocchio, are you recusing yourself?
When in doubt, sit it out.
Yes, recuse myself.
All right, so both Commissioner Barocchio and Commissioner Tordeos are recusing themselves from this item, and we still meet quorum, so we're fine there. Okay. Oh, sorry.
I need to recuse myself also. I have more than the threshold of stock in Google.
Thank you, Commissioner Rosario. Okay, so Commissioners Barocchio, Rosario, and Tordeos, I believe that leaves us with seven folks, so we're still within quorum, so all good there. And as City Attorney stated, if we have discussion on this item, those folks will have to leave the room.
Okay.
Okay.
So why don't we, yeah, let's wait for public comment. Why don't we have these commissioners? Excuse me, ma'am. Just one minute. Why don't we have these commissioners exit the room first before we have a discussion or any public comment? This is not the city council. They do not have any jurisdiction over the actual district. Yeah. So if there's... Do we know if this back room is open, or are they going to have to step out in the hallway? It's not open.
All right, I'll wait for City Attorney to return before we continue. All right, so it sounds like we do have some public comment on this item. So I don't have any speaker cards, so feel free to line up at the podium. Yeah, and you just state your name, and you'll have two minutes to speak.
Only one?
Yeah, two minutes, and the microphone will turn off automatically at the end of two minutes.
Okay, this is my first time here, so.
No worries. Thanks for coming.
Excuse me if I'm, well, I'm not going to say if I'm rude or whatever. So when does the clock start? Where's the ticking clock? How do I know? Where's the two minutes? Of course, it doesn't work. There's no clock on here. Touch it? Okay. And then when do I say go? When I hit the green thing? No, you don't have to do anything. Okay. Okay, so I am a resident of that area, near the Deer Down, whatever. So, and I deal with a lot of unhoused people and everything, and I'm worried. I'm worried about the unhoused, where they're going to go. I'm worried about the, is Google, who's Google? Are you Google? No. Are they bringing jobs to the area? This is not funny, young man. You, City Attorney. I'm not laughing. This is not a laughing matter. There's no jobs. I realize I heard that Google's, a lot of the people are making $400,000 a year. Okay, they can afford to live wherever they are. There's a lot, there's a community of people who don't make $400,000 a year. What about the kids? What about the parking? Like, what exactly is, I haven't seen any, this is the first meeting, because they used to have them at the houses. I haven't seen Google come. Who is Google? I haven't seen even one come. I haven't, you know, I got this little postcard or whatever. Like, we need more involvement. You know, I have a son. I would love for him to work at Google. You know, I would want, I want him to make $400,000, but where are we going to park? Like, I need, where are the city planning? Where's the blueprint? You know, I know the thing across the street from housing, they're building that, but what else is going on? Like, this summer, there were no summer youth programs for the kids. Why can't Google do that? Like, you know, you want to take all of this, but what are you giving back? What are you giving back to the community? You know, are you guys implementing anything? Okay, were they giving 10%? They're giving 1%? You know, are they, is there any plans for the unhoused? Is it any plans for the minority youth? Is it any plans for people who don't, are nowhere near the poverty level, the baseline? Like, nothing, you know? And he thinks this is funny. This is not funny. City Attorney Office, I saw you laughing. Yes, you did. You were laughing.
Not laughing at you, ma'am.
Well, you were laughing, and this is not a funny manner.
Thank you. No, it's just two minutes per person. Per item, though. You're welcome to speak on further items. Is there any further public comment on this item? And I'll ask staff, do you have any response to any of the issues raised during public comment on this item?
I'd like again to introduce Nancy Klein, Director of Economic Development, who is probably in a good position to respond to some of these questions.
Nancy Klein, Director of Economic Development, City of San Jose. I want to make sure that several of the council commissioners, sorry, who are here today might not have been familiar with the literally thousands of meetings that went forward on the Google project and would be happy to spend some time afterward to share some more detail. The development agreement that you're reviewing does include $200 million of community benefit, which is on top of the 4,000 units of housing and fully 1,000 units of housing that are affordable of that. So there was an extensive series of benefits that came to the city or are coming to the city through the Downtown West Development. And unlike many community benefits plans, Google has already begun paying on them, even though the bulk of the development or the development proper has not yet begun. So the city has received $7.5 million to be expended toward assisting in displacement and toward job growth and job training. So there's already work begun through the dollars and through the efforts, and the community meetings, of which many, many organizations were involved, expressly echoed those concerns raised about displacement and youth and jobs.
Okay, I'd just like to remind the public that this is not a conversational process. This, there's a time for public comment, and then I ask staff for response, but that's the extent to which this process allows a dialogue. She offered to speak to you privately. I, that's, you had your time to speak on this item. Thank you. All right, so we had public comment and had some input from staff. We're going to go to the commission now. Is there any discussion or motions to be made on this item? Commissioner Cantrell?
Hi. I just want to say thank you for coming and stating what you state. I think I, I think we should all appreciate when the public does show up, because generally they don't. So I'd just like to thank her for coming and making her comments. Agree or disagree, I heard you. Thank you.
All right. We have Commissioner Annalys Wise next. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to ask staff, how has the pandemic really impacted some of these development agreements? Because I've heard that there's been some delay in some of the Google plans, so if you could elaborate on that a bit.
I'd just like to remind the public that there was a time for public comment, and it has passed.
Thank you very much for the question, Commissioner. The pandemic, as with many companies, they, Google is in a period of reassessing what their staffing demand is. They have stated publicly and transparently that Google remains very committed to the Deer Down station area, and they're excited about many of the things that are happening, like the electrification of Caltrain, which will be starting its implementation in September of 2024. So the commitment remains. The specific timing of when construction will start has not been identified as yet. Thank you.
All right, we'll go to Commissioner Young.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question actually on the Autumn Street parcels that were given to the city. Could you just amplify on that? Because it's the first I've heard of that. Thanks.
Thank you very much for the question as well. So there are parcels, as you mentioned, on Autumn Street that the Housing Department, the whole point was to move ahead and get affordable housing development happening in the area as a way to address potential displacement or likely displacement. So the project that has been identified is the opportunity to redevelop life moves, keeping a shelter so that Deer Down remains a place for everyone. The center parcels, which Google gave to the city, the Housing Department, and then the Housing Authority property. And there was a request for proposals, and the Housing Authority was the successful bidder, and there are plans to develop what will take place, and that process is moving along. So as intended, affordable housing will happen first in the area.
Great. So just to clarify, that project's going to move ahead regardless of when Google starts their construction, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the intent, and the money available, we have to go through the regular channels, but it appears so.
And the, I'm sorry, is that the Santa Clara County Housing Authority that was the successful?
The Housing Authority, yes. Santa Clara County Housing Authority.
Thank you.
I'd just like to remind the public that during a meeting, there's a time for public comment, and that is the opportunity to give input on an item. We accept written public comment in advance of the meeting. Would it be helpful if staff could state like the right way to give feedback after this meeting?
Yeah, I believe Nancy made an offer to contact you, or you may be able to contact her for specific questions on that. So we can provide information if you can provide us your contact information.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve the staff recommendation on this item.
Commissioner Young has made a motion to approve the staff recommendation. Is there a second?
I second.
Second from Vice Chair Annalys Wise. Is there any discussion on the motion from the commission? Seeing none, we'll move on to a vote. Vice Chair Annalys Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio? Oh, sorry. Right, my bad. Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
All right, and myself, yes. So I believe that is seven yes, zero no, three abstentions, and one absence. So the motion passes. All right, we'll continue to, oh, yeah, and we'll take a moment for the commissioners to return. Welcome back. Okay, now that the commissioners have returned, we'll continue on to item 5E, which is DA-ebay. This is the annual compliance review hearing for the eBay PayPal Development Agreement. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will continue to the commission. Is there any discussion on this item or any motions? Sorry. Vice Chair Annalys Wise?
I just had a question in regard to, it looks like this development agreement will expire next year, and I see that they have an outstanding recordation of final tentative map, and they only have one year to do that. Will they be doing that in this, I mean, because sometimes that could take about a year, sometimes.
They could do that. They haven't applied for one as yet, and if the development agreement expires without them having applied, they would just apply for a new tentative map and subsequent final map.
So basically, it would expire? Okay.
That's right.
Okay, thanks.
And I'd also like to note, Commissioner Annalys Wise, that as a result of the COVID, most of the approved projects already had two-year extensions, and I believe it's applicable. We just didn't note it in here.
Yeah, that was one of the things that I had a question on. Was there an extension because of COVID on these development agreements that kind of did a blanket over all of them?
In this case, no. The agreement provided for a specific term for the tentative map. Normally, tentative maps expire within 160 days of being approved, or approximately that timeframe, but this one allowed the map to be valid for the entire term of the agreement of 20 years. So it would not, this particular map would not be subject to an extension.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion, or are there any motions on this item?
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Tordeos. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Casey. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll continue to a vote. Vice Chair Annalys Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that is 10 yes, zero no, and Commissioner Bigford is absent, so one absence. All right, we'll continue on to item 5F, which is DA Hitachi. This is the annual compliance review hearing for the Hitachi Western Digital Development Agreement. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will turn it over to the commission for any discussion or motions.
Motion to approve the staff recommendation?
A motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Tordeos. Is there a second?
Second.
That was from Commissioner Casey, the second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll continue the vote. Vice Chair Annalys Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Commissioner Bigford is absent. 10 yes, zero no's, one absence. The motion passes. Now we'll have 5G, which is the last of, not the last item, but the last annual compliance review hearing. This is DA- Novellas. I might have pronounced that right. This is the annual compliance review hearing for the Novellas Development Agreement. Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will turn it over to the commission for discussion or motions. Commissioner Annalys Wise, or Vice Chair Annalys Wise?
Yeah, I had a question regarding, it looks like they have 27 acres of industrial that they have not built. And so I just wanted to know if, I mean, because recently we've approved some projects that we've lost some industrial land, so it'd be really nice to have some industrial land. So I just wanted to know what as staff you see is going to happen with this property, this 27 acres.
We haven't had any indication from the developers on what time they might want to develop this property. If they choose not to develop the property within the timeframe of the DA, they always have the ability to apply for a standard development permit to do that. That's all staff is aware of at this point. There may be someone from EQT Exeter if you may want to speak on it.
Is there anyone from EQT Exeter who wants to speak on this item? No.
It appears Eric Deo, he is the representative, has his hand raised.
Oh, sorry. On Zoom, okay. Yeah, just if you could answer that question?
I'll have to speak here. Okay. Yeah, I think, Eric, you should be able to speak if you unmute your mic or your, yeah.
Sorry, this is Eric Deo, Director of Property Management for EQT Exeter. No decision has been made at the No decision has been made at the moment.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Anneliese Wise, do you have any further questions?
When something like this happens, would staff continue to maybe zone this 27 acres as industrial zoning?
It has a general plan designation for industrial, so it will still be available.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other further discussion on this item? If not, are there any motions on this item?
A motion to approve.
Motion to approve the staff recommendation from Vice Chair Anneliese Wise. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Young. Any discussion of the motion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. Vice Chair Anneliese Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocchio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Tordeos?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Commissioner Bigford is absent. That is 10 yes, zero no, and one absence. So the motion passes.
Also, yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. Commissioner Rosario, that was a yes from you?
That's right.
Okay. Apologize. All right, so that is it for the annual compliance review hearings. We're going to move on to item five H and all right, so this is item five H, PDC 22-008, PD 22-020, T 22-030, and ER 22-195. Plan development zoning to, well, this is in summary to remove 33 trees, construct 14 multifamily residential units, including the conversion of an existing single-family house into a duplex and the construction of 12 townhouses and associated rezoning. This is at 4146 Mitzi Drive in Council District One. And as a reminder, on the procedure here, we will hear a presentation from staff if there is one. Then the applicant will have five minutes to speak. Then we'll take public comment and then the applicant will have an additional five minutes. And then we'll go to the commission. So is there a presentation? Hi, Alec.
Evening Commissioners. Alec Atienza, Planning Project Manager on the Development Review Team. Very pleased to be bringing this project to you. We've been working on it since 2018 in some form, so it's been a while. So the project before you is 4146 Mitzi Drive. And I just want to give you a bit of background to set the stage so you understand what you're seeing today. So in October of 2020, the Planning Director approved a special use permit for a 40-unit apartment building on this site. And with that project, it also included the onsite relocation of the existing Graves House that was built in 1868. It was a candidate city landmark and was eligible for listing on the California Register of Historic Resources. That, at that time, the Graves House would have been converted into a six-unit multifamily building. Ultimately, that project was determined infeasible to construct. And so in August of last year, 2022, the applicant submitted applications for plan development zoning, plan development permit, and a tentative map. And that would allow the onsite relocation again of the Graves House. And it would be converted to a duplex this time, as well as the construction of 12 townhouses. However, in November of 2022, the Graves House was partially destroyed in a fire. So the applicant altered that description to include instead of the relocation and rehabilitation, now the full reconstruction of the house. So in May of this past year, May of this year, 2023, the Graves House was fully demolished and partially salvaged. So it's just a bit of background to get you where we are today. So the project before you right now is a planned development zoning district. So the existing zoning for the site is urban residential. And this new zoning district would be a planned development zoning district to accommodate both the townhouses and the reconstruction of the Graves House. So with that is a planned development permit and that would allow the removal of all 33 trees onsite, as well as the reconstruction of the Graves House as a duplex. And that reconstruction is conditioned to occur under the direction of a qualified historic architect. And the project would be consistent with the Secretary of the Interior Standards for Reconstruction. So in addition to that Graves House reconstruction, we have again the construction of 12 townhouses. Those are configured in four three-story buildings and they're served by a private driveway off of Ranchero Way. And then to support that, the applicant has proposed subdividing a lot. So it's one parcel today. It would be subdivided into two parcels and then allowed up to 14 residential condominiums. So the 12 townhouses and then the two in the Graves House. In terms of project review, so this project was reviewed for conformance with the general plan land use designation of urban residential, as well as the municipal code requirements, any city standard, city, excuse me, citywide design standards and guidelines, City Council Policy 6-30 for public outreach. We did hold a community meeting for the original iteration of this project, as well as this version of the project. And then with conformance to California Environmental Quality Act. So with regards to environmental review, that original project that I talked about, that special use permit for the 40-unit apartment building, for that, an initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared for that project in accordance with SEQA. As part of this project, an addendum to that initial study was prepared. So no new significant impacts or impacts were identified for this proposed project. As the site no longer contains a historical resource, this is a key piece of information. So because it burned down, it's no longer considered a historic resource. So any related mitigation measures in the adopted ISM and D for the relocation and the rehabilitation of Graves, of the Graves House as it was originally proposed, would no longer be required. So instead, that reconstruction is included as a condition of the planned development permit and in the development standards of the planned development zoning. So one of the attachments to your staff report includes development standards for this specific planned development zoning district. And that does include the requirements to reconstruct the house up to the Secretary of the Interior Standards. And then lastly, the remaining identified mitigation measures are included in the MMRP, which is attached to your draft SEQA resolution. And that is essentially continuation of what was already approved with that previous apartment project. So with that, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the city council the adoption of the addendum, the approval of the rezoning, the best tentative map, and the planned development permit. So with that, I will pass it off to the applicant's representative, Eric Shanauer. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Shanauer. So, you know, we'll have five minutes for this presentation. And I believe the timer that you see will start automatically and then the microphone will turn off.
Yeah, waiting for the presentation to come out.
Oh, yeah.
Hopefully. Let's see what happens.
And of course, we'll begin the five minutes once this is resolved.
That was the Fairfield Inn on Monterey Road that you all saw about a month ago. Apparently it's still in the system. I didn't hear us. I'll get started while he's pulling up this. My name is Eric Shanauer and I represent the applicant on this project. Chair Lardinois, members of the commission, thank you for having us. This project is an opportunity to provide for sale housing in a neighborhood where there's very little new housing being built. So it's a good opportunity. And let me, now that we're up, let me get to the first screen. And so we think it's a good opportunity for people to establish roots in the, in the neighborhood with entry-level housing in the form of townhomes and two new condos in a reconstructed historic building. Another benefit of the project to the neighborhood is if you look at the pictures on the bottom of the screen, the three on the bottom, there are no sidewalks along this property. And there is basically a masonry and other type of wall around the property, walling it off from the neighborhood. So with this development, we will, this is the new site plan. We will be adding new city-standard sidewalks, street trees, streetlights along Ranchero Way, as well as Mitzi Drive. So it'll complete the neighborhood and create a safe place for pedestrians to walk. The development will have 12 townhomes as, in addition to condominiums in the reconstructed historic Graves House. And in addition to removing the wall building the sidewalks, we're going to have the buildings front on the street. So the top image you see here is the Graves House now being relocated and rebuilt, fronting on Mitzi Drive, as well as some of the new townhomes fronting on Mitzi. And then the bottom image you see here are the units that will be fronting on Ranchero Way. So the transition will be dramatic from a place that has no sidewalks and a masonry wall to having sidewalks, street trees, and front doors and front porches opening onto the, the public street. The cornerstone of the whole project is the reconstruction of the Graves House, which I'm going to show you in a moment. And we want to thank the Preservation Action Council and also our historic architect, John Frohle, for their consultation on the plan. And this is what we will, this is what we are required to reconstruct. So the house will emulate the historic character of the building that burned. During the demolition, we did salvage pieces of the facade so that we can reuse pieces and also recreate pieces of the facade. So it is as authentic as possible. And the front of the facade is the most representative of, of the structure. And that's going to now have a prominent, which is viewed here on the bottom left, that'll have a prominent position on the public street, fronting on Mitzi for everyone to enjoy in the neighborhood. And so for all those reasons, the developer's commitment to rebuild this building, providing for sale housing in the neighborhood and cleaning up a blighted property that has been a nuisance for the neighborhood with homelessness and other problems, we hope that you will agree with staff and recommend approval of the project to the city council. And we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go on to public comment if there is any. Okay, we have a public commenter. Can you just go ahead and bring me the card? Sorry. I'm not sure what the usual procedure is for these cards. Oh, there you go. Perfect. All right, so go ahead and state your name and then you'll have two minutes.
Thank you Commissioners. Appreciate the time very much. I sent a letter, email just before the meeting. I apologize for the lateness of it, but there is no ambush here. We, I'm with Preservation Action Council. I come with full-throated support for the proposed, the project as proposed. And I want to make a few comments about that for some context. Because oftentimes we're kind of fighting, you know, development and it's not because we don't want to see the housing that comes with it, but we want to make sure that we don't lose that fabric that, you know, is unique to us. It provides housing that complements the neighborhood. One of the things that PAC learned in its engagement with the neighbors is that was a location that was in crisis. And there was a lot going on there that was not good for the neighborhood. The developer has committed to, and we trust them to do what they've said. We trust the land use consultant deeply. You know, that, that this will be a faithful reconstruction of the 1868 Graves House. It's going to be prominent. It's going to be beautiful on Mitzi Drive. It's going to be something that people will go see. It will bring value to that neighborhood and we believe wholeheartedly. They've agreed, as Eric had mentioned, they're widening the street, they're putting a sidewalk in. Nothing does more for a community than making it walkable. And it does that. And what we've seen, and I literally prayed with a tormented man who was living in that house. And you could tell he was flipping a Bic lighter as we were talking, just as a tick. That that house was not going to survive through our, you know, planning process. It takes time to do these things. We know that we're a part of that process.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
On the Zoom, there is.
Okay, great. So that you're gonna, yeah, sorry, I'm not sure who meant, is that you, John? Anyways, yeah, so the person on Zoom, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and you'll have two minutes.
Yes, my name is Rose Borst and I, with my husband John Borst, lived at 4145 Mitzi Drive. And overall, I think the project, we're much happier with this than what was planned originally. So that's good. I think we missed the second meeting. We made it to the original meeting, but we missed the second meeting. And so there's probably a good reason for this, but I brought it up at the first meeting and didn't get a good answer, I think. But there, at the property, I don't know if you remember the, he had a picture of it up, but there's five very tall palm trees along Ranchero Way that are beautiful palm trees. And I, I know they're planning to widen the street, which actually concerns me a little bit from the standpoint of, I think cars will move faster down that street now. But I think even with the widening, there might be a way to save and protect a sidewalk. Like if you look at, go back to that picture, if you see this sidewalk on the other side of the street, there's palm trees and you feel kind of protected when you're walking there because it's the sidewalk, the palm trees, and the street. So anyway, overall, I, I do think that it'll make, you know, we're happy that they changed it entrance over to Ranchero, the first project had it coming directly into our house. So I think overall, happy, just would look at that possibility of leaving those palm trees, if at all possible, in the widening of that street. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any more public commenters? Sounds like we do not. Oh, yeah, well, yes. And so we'll allow the applicant to return for another five-minute presentation.
Eric Shanauer, representing the applicant. First of all, I just want to thank Mike with the Preservation Action Council. This has been a very collaborative effort. As he mentioned, often, often there's contention when it comes to historic or candidate historic building. In this case, the developer was committed from the beginning to preserve this building. Unfortunately, a fire occurred. And so we're trying to make lemonade out of the situation. And you can see from the architectural plans, it's going to be a really nice building when it's done, even though it's not the original. With regard to the palm trees from the other commenter, first of all, we're not widening Ranchero Way, right? We're just finishing where it doesn't have sidewalks. So the width of Ranchero that exists throughout the neighborhood will be maintained in front of our property. The, obviously, it's going to be wider because it doesn't have sidewalks now. But we're not, we're not expanding it any bigger than what exists in the rest of the neighborhood, as per the direction of Public Works. And the palm trees on our property cannot be saved because they're in the way of building the new sidewalk. But the commenter mentioned the benefit of having trees, it sounded like, between, in the park strip, between the sidewalk and the vehicle lanes. And part of building the city-standard sidewalk is we will have a park strip with new street trees planted. So that'll create a buffer between the sidewalk and the travel lanes. In addition, we'll be adding In addition, we'll be adding on-street parking that doesn't exist today, which will create yet another buffer between the sidewalk and the travel lanes. So we appreciate your time and hope that you will recommend to the council that the project be approved, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Shanauer. We'll go to the commission now. I see a request to speak from Commissioner Casey. Go ahead.
I don't want to steal the new ice thunder here, and I would imagine there might be a few comments, but I'd like to place a motion on the table here to approve staff's recommendations.
All right, there is a motion to approve the staff recommendation from Commissioner Casey. Is there a second?
A second.
Second from Commissioner Rosario. Any discussion? Okay, we got it on here. Commissioner Torrios, go ahead.
Sorry, I just had a couple of questions for staff and then one question for the applicant.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, first question was just for the applicant. So as I was preparing for today's hearing, I noticed that it seems like the site in question is listed for sale, so I was just curious if the applicant was, you know, planning on developing the project or, you know, selling the entitled project.
The, the owners and developer haven't made a decision yet. We're exploring options to see if there's someone else who would, would prefer to, to do the development.
Awesome, thank you.
But we may build it. It just depends on what the market's telling us.
Yeah, understood, thank you. And then my other questions are for city staff. So one was related to the condition, there was a note that reconstruction of the Graves House was a condition for the PD permit. Would that condition kind of transfer if the property were to be sold?
Yeah, absolutely. So the permits run with the land. We always say "permit-y" in the permits that you read, so ensure that it's running with the land.
Awesome, thank you. And then second question was just, curious if this project is subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance?
It is, but they will be paying the in-lu fee. Any changes to that moving forward, just so the commission is aware? Any changes to projects that have inclusionary housing conditions if, between the time that the applicant, if in the time the project is approved and they go to construction, they want to change that, it actually has to come back to the hearing body? So just some food for thought for the future.
Thank you. And then my final question was just the note on the actual density of the project. I saw that there was a note in the staff report that this appears to be below the minimum density for the urban residential land use designation. The staff report mentioned that the residential density should be prescriptive unless there's some SEQA impact, so I was curious if staff could elaborate a little bit on, you know, the impact that warrants a decrease in density for this site, especially just given that there was a previously approved entitlement at a higher density? So just kind of how to reconcile those two.
Right, so this is actually, one of the key components of the project is that because there is a historic component to it, our general plan basically allows you to reduce density. It doesn't specify how much, and so early on in discussions with the applicant, we were really pushing for them to get as much density as possible while also maintaining the, you know, the Graves House. And so ultimately, we came up to 27 dwelling units of the acre, close to 30, but not quite. But the goal is to preserve the historic resource first, you know, and then get as much density as possible.
Yeah, I think that approach makes a lot of sense. I guess on that note, just one thing that I noted in the staff presentation was that it said that the site no longer contains a historical resource. So again, how that kind of factors into the exemption to the density.
Right. David, can you maybe speak to that from a SEQA perspective versus historic?
Good afternoon, members of the commission. David Keon, Principal Planner, City Environment Review Team. So from the perspective of historic resource, because it was destroyed, it is no longer considered a historic resource for the purpose of SEQA. However, it is being rebuilt as basically replica of what was previously there. But, you know, because it's being rebuilt as a replica, that's why this exception that Alec is talking about would apply.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, there's a lot to like in this project. I definitely would love to see the Graves House reconstructed. The improvements to add sidewalks to this neighborhood would obviously be good for everyone in the community. I think I just struggle a little bit with this exemption to the density. I know a few weeks ago, we reviewed a project where it included single-family homes quite close to a BART station, and at the time, we kind of said, you know, these were previous land use decisions that were made, and now as long as developers play by those rules, you know, we have to respect that. So I struggle a little bit here where we seem to be on the other side of that equation, where now the density is below what previous land use decisions seemed to dictate would be appropriate.
I think the other thing, too, maybe, to consider is that, so this is not in a growth area, and it is, what I would say, is a transition zone between two areas. We have very high-density apartment buildings to the east of the site, and then, you know, your typical single-family ranches to the west, and so this, you could see this is some sort of a transition zone as well. But, I mean, note taken on the fact that it is below the density allowed.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I think a lot to love in this project. I just want to make sure we're being intentional and consistent in the way that we apply these rules. So, thank you.
Vice Chair Nellis Wise.
Yeah, I had a question, and you answered it right now. I, I was wondering about neighborhood compatibility. I'm not familiar with this neighborhood with the density. I really wanted to know, but it looks like you answered it. Yeah. And is there any other historical structures in that area besides this? No.
I actually don't think there are. We have the Historic Preservation Officer on the line, if you'd like. Dana, are you there?
Good evening, Commissioners. No, this house was built over 140 years ago, and it used to consist of a lot of ranchland, and so obviously, it's been carved, you know, down to what it is now, to such a small parcel, but, you know, in the course of that, it's all been developed over time. So this is the, it was, hopefully will be again, a remnant of that, that time from the 1860s.
Thank you, Dana. I, I also commend the developers for including the, the historic structure. Thank you. I think this is a perfect example of what's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Is that all? Great. I have a question myself. Just, I didn't realize until tonight that there was no sidewalk along the property. And when I've seen that in the past in West San Jose, usually it's because it was previously a county pocket that was relatively recently annexed. Is that the case here, or?
Yeah, so that's actually part of the reason why it was likely not included on the historic resources inventory sooner. So I believe it wasn't annexed until 1980. I can confirm that. Two seconds, hold on.
Sure.
Yeah, August 1980, it wasn't annexed. So you're right, yeah, that's why it didn't have sidewalks.
Okay. And then also, just if I can give commentary here, I live fairly close to this neighborhood, not close enough that I have to accuse myself, thankfully, and I, I used to live in this neighborhood. And I just, you know, I say like, the reconstruction of the Graves House is gorgeous and is very similar to a lot of the older buildings in this general area of West San Jose. And as staff mentioned, this is an area that is very near low-density apartments, and so the, and near areas with townhouses, so definitely similar to what's already there and seems to be a great fit for the neighborhood. We'll continue down the list here. Commissioner Cantrell? Let me, here you go. Go ahead.
Oh, thanks. Actually, I just have a curiosity, actually, for the, the owner or the developer of the property. I'm, I'm just wondering, isn't this basically development gold? What we'd call in, in San Jose, where you're building single-family homes, low-density, easy to sell, why would, why would you be marketing the property? Is there some concern over financing or anything like that? Why would you put it for sale?
That's the primary challenge. And first of all, the, at this moment, the property is not listed for sale. Commissioner Torrios, I think, saw a previous listing that has expired, but, but because of the challenges in the financing market and the capital market right now, we're exploring all options. I mean, our goal is to get this project built as soon as possible and have someone, either ourselves or another party, that wants to, to build it as approved, they have no choice, and that means they have to buy into the historic reconstruction. So we're just exploring those options. But the market's very difficult right now.
I understand for financing, but not necessarily for sale of new single-family homes.
Yeah.
I'm just, it just seems interesting to me that you'd have difficulty financing a project with low-density, single-family homes in, in this area.
Well, yeah, I'm not saying we are having problems, it's just not the easiest market right now to be finalizing those, those financing plans. We may very well build it, to be determined.
Okay. Now, like I said, I was curious.
Yeah.
I don't have anyone else on my request list to speak. Does anyone else have?
Is it you that would like to speak?
Yes, that's already passed on this item. Do we have anyone else on the commission who'd like to speak on this item? And if not, do we have a motion?
There's already one.
Oh, I am so sorry. Yes, Commissioner Casey had a motion at the beginning of our discussion. My apologies. So if there's no further discussion, we'll go into a vote on that motion. So this is to approve the staff recommendation. Vice Chair Nellis Wise?
Yes.
Commissioner Barocio?
Yes.
Commissioner Cantrell?
Yes.
Commissioner Casey?
Yes.
Commissioner Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Oliverio?
Yes.
Commissioner Rosario?
Yes.
Commissioner Torrios?
Yes.
Commissioner Young?
Yes.
Myself, yes. And Commissioner Bickford is absent, so we have 10 yes, zero no's, and one abstention, or not abstention, one absence. The motion is approved. All right, we'll continue on to referrals from City Council, boards, commissions, or other agencies. Do we have any of those?
No, we don't.
Okay, we do not. Yeah, and we'll go on to good and welfare. Report from City Council? Go ahead, Robert.
Yes, we do. Yesterday, all the land use items, most of which came from this commission, were approved under consent. And I, just to go down the list, it's the conditional use permit and determination of public convenience for certain real property located at 1750 story road. That's the target of sale. And then there's also minor streets naming for a private driveway located east of intersection of Oakland Road and Rock Avenue. That's in D4. It didn't come through here, went straight to City Council. And then we also had the Moore Park Annexation located at 2323 to 2391 Moore Park Avenue, and also the planned development rezoning for property located at 1669 Monterey Road. That's the hotel. That was also approved under consent. And then we had another property located at 350 West Tremble Road. That's a planned development rezoning, also approved. And the last one is the real property located at 972 Elm Street, which is also planned development rezoning and planned development permits. That was also approved.
Okay, and that concludes the report from City Council. Thank you, Robert. B, Subcommittee Formation Reports Outstanding Business. I assume we don't have anything for that. C, Commissioner Calendar and Study Sessions. Do you have any, are there any updates on the commission calendar?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And Item D, the public record? No? Okay.
I just wanted to say, I will be on vacation beginning August 28th, coming back September 12th.
Thank you, Robert. And do you know who will be representing the director?
Michael Breo, well, in my absence, but I think even our next meeting is canceled.
Oh, is it? Okay, I don't know if we've received a cancellation notice yet, but...
You, you will be receiving that.
Okay. Good to know.
And it's not because of me, it's just because we don't have any items scheduled.
All right. Okay, so then, we're coming up on adjournment. I just want to remind everyone that the parking validation meter is at the top of the room. You can put your ticket in to get free parking. And then also, just want to remind the public that the commission's email addresses are on our website, and that you're welcome to contact me personally at any time. And we will see you all in September. All right, this, it is 7:52, adjourning the meeting.